Yeah, I was on, I was in, we're, we're coming to Nashville.
I feel like when they, when they, when information comes in, we'll know.
Approval of board meeting minutes for July 24th, 2024.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for July 24th, 2024.
I'll second that.
And a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of meeting agenda.
I'll move for the approval of meeting agenda.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Consent agenda.
For the approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Okay. Discussion items. We've got the athletic location update by Mr. Clark.
Right now? Okay, so I have a breakdown sheet right here. There is four teams that use this field. Davis Field, that's varsity football and JV football and varsity girls soccer and JV girls soccer. And I have this broken down, but in football, we're going to, basically what we're doing is we're replicating home games anywhere else. Which means we get the ASV budget, but we provide the workers and we are the home team. What we, this is pretty fluid too, so week one, we are going to switch with Centralia. They will be the home team. The caveat here is since it, what we want with the home team is we will, we want to be able to host our events, so during home games, we have our drill team perform every home game. And so Centralia will let us perform the first game. So that's really nice on their part. Which means the next year, we will have six home games, which will be good for ASV to fun. The next two weeks, we will be at Montesano. That's a cost of thirteen hundred ninety. We have a couple cost issues here. One is a five hundred dollar rental. Transportation will be about six hundred. That's taking two buses, a football team and a drill team and a cheer team. Perhaps another van. And then our workers. We bring our workers with us when we do this, which includes a chain gang, a two takedakers, announcer and a timer. And so we'll do that week three and week five for our home games and week six, which is homecoming. The open stadium for that will be shown. And that's just a little bit more expensive there roughly. I'll talk that over with the AD there and see what we can get.
I have a question, Ron.
Sure.
Um, and I should have asked you this earlier, but I was on the phone. We were kind of doing messaging back and forth with the engineer and the city. So it's not a fair question. Based upon how locked in are we on these contracts and can we, um, I'm gonna try to ask you these questions before board meetings, so I'm just gonna apologize.
No, I already talked about that with the eighties.
Are we able to cancel these and not pay for these if we're still?
Absolutely. Those bleachers are there. We're playing home.
Perfect. So like, so like what you've set it up for is, is we have a plan and then permit comes through and then once that build permits come through and we're, we're in a position to break ground and move third. We have a place to go for the moment. We're able to move third.
Absolutely.
But up until that point, we can still continue to play at home.
I, I, I bet you within a week of game one, I'll know for sure whether we're pulling those bleachers out or not. And we'll make that final decision.
We'll know in a few days, I think.
Okay.
Because I think, um, I think our engineer has the, uh, what we need to do is we needed to break the designs out because we're doing the entryway and doing that by breaking it in half. The only barrier we're gonna have is they were hoping to do all of the concrete pouring in one go. And it might mean that we have the upper stands project going this fall, but design not be able to do, we have the concrete pouring in spring. Based upon, because one project's more complex, so it's gonna take more engineering design. It's also gonna take more work on a, uh, hill. So that'll be, that might disrupt our spring placement where we probably can still play down below because those stands would be in place. But we need to help people find a new way to get to the field because the main three way.
I, I have just a quick question and it might be, there might be something that I don't even, not even thinking about. But go into these other schools, did we even consider like Oakville?
No.
School? And I've only asked that because it was brought to my intent, well, it's asked of me and I'm like, I have no idea. Um, transportation wise, I mean, for families traveling, um, it's not that far. Fourteen miles down the highway twelve. So I don't know if that's an option to look at Oakville's school, but they've redone everything down there. They've got a beautiful field.
I called Rich Staley. And my conversation with Rich was, because I was initially feeling out super tens before Ron started calling eighties. Was is they really don't want people lining it and the stands wouldn't be big enough.
Okay.
They would like to keep people.
Fair enough. I'm just asking if that was explored.
Was is they wouldn't be able to hold enough, but they also didn't want to have it all spread out. So I think their concern is we have a lot of more than they could support.
Yeah, fair enough. I was just asking if that was explored.
Are we able to do like we've done in the past and do like a five dollar road to bus?
We could.
Yeah, it could be an ASV year.
That's something I didn't put in here, but we might do that and the cost, you don't get none on the road to bus though, offset the cost of that.
Yeah.
So I didn't put it in here.
Sure.
I'm sure we'll do that if, if we're on the road. Again, this is all fluid. If those stands are there, we're playing at home.
Okay.
The other thing, um, just to go through here, and I've already made a, it's really, your guys have the fine lines on this, but the other two events, JV football and girls soccer, I call both clear risk and the referees. And we can play in, in, in a construction area. So if those puddings are being, are poured, but there's no stands there, as long as we follow some rules, we can play at home. And I will tell you this from my aspect, I don't know how we pull girls soccer's up off if we don't.
You mean though?
It's a logistics nightmare.
Can I clarify though?
Yeah.
Like, work is not going on. There's a fence.
No, no.
Like, like they're off the clock, the workers are at home. We don't have a crane moving equipment.
Right. He's just meaning like in the construction.
I feel like our, uh, just for our community, that's very clear distinction of saying like, we have a game going on while construction is ongoing is not what they're just saying. They're saying like, workers have gone home for the day. It is fenced off.
And Delaney and I did talk about that and I said, I'll get you the dates soccer. So if anybody's planning on working overtime or they're gonna donate some time, that's where we'll just.
I, I did know the answer to that question. I just feel like it was worth saying.
Well, putting it in black and white, it's always good to have it clear.
Like there's a, yeah, just, just as you said it, like my first brain went to like, you can have it during an active construction project.
Yeah.
Not actively under construction.
Clear risk is gonna be through, uh, in the early next month or at the end of this month, they're gonna be through this area and I asked if they'd come down, we'll walk that area. But I explained the whole thing to them and they were, they understood. What I'd like to do, with my good friend Jeff here's, if we can get the, uh, bleachers that we usually get for homecoming, but just for the season to put around the field.
Oh.
The one thing with soccer, you cannot be in the end zone. You can't, I'm not obstruct there, but we can put them on like three quarters of, like a semi circle around the field. To take up a little extra and then it's just a matter of us partitioning off the field and people bringing down their lawn chairs as well.
Like we do down here.
The, the coaches would like to play on.
And Ron, on the JV football, are they able to utilize the field that's at the middle school and the track?
We can do that if we had to, but we can't plan varsity field.
I was just thinking, we already have the bleachers for the track meets anyways there. So there is, there is stands there and if we moved the current, if the
Yeah.
current bleachers there. I guess we're moving them somewhere else. You know?
That's Mr. Ness's.
Yeah, so I would think if we move those, say, because I know there's been talk about potentially moving them over to where the middle school build is and the track there, that, that would be more seating for JV.
We're looking at a rotation, but we need to kind of get the measurements and see on can we pull off a current bleachers to the middle school and middle school bleachers to disassemble and bringing them down here. So then that way we have stands for field here for games.
The, the ones on the current football field won't fit where the middle school one is because they're way deeper and it drops off there. So we would have to do some dirt moving to actually move them. So the plan is just get them out of the way and build a new thing and then figure out.
And then we would have to move forward on a further construction project, lay more concrete and disassemble. It'll be a year and a half jockeying. Uh, but our ultimate goal is, but we'll have to price it out, get the budget, lay the concrete. We'd like to current stands to the junior high fields, move the junior high stands, one of our soccer fields down here. So then that way we have capacity all right.
Cause I'm just guessing, you know, when the crowds I've seen down for youth football. You know, they're at that field. I mean, I'd almost think that there's probably more people at those youth football than a lot of times.
JV doesn't get quite that, but we show pretty good for JV.
Right.
You're talking little guys.
Yeah.
Youth.
Yeah.
The middle school build is, is good.
Right.
However, uh, you also got the sunset issue because we don't have lights. So we plan on playing double headers or too early in the season with our middle school. Until the light thing becomes an issue and then we'll do two separate days. Um, so, uh, the point is, uh, to still go through with girls soccer at Davis Field and JV football. But we got those other places to play if we need to. The other thing too is why not all three times at Monty? Because, uh, week six versus tonight is our homecoming and we have to play that on a Friday. Monty has a home game that week. We, we really cannot interfere with families' plan around our homecoming as, as you guys know. So we're gonna keep it Friday night. That was the best and closest place we could get. Aberdeen unfortunately did not match up with us at all this year.
Which is unfortunate because I think they were like, on our initial rollout was, we're the most willing to make this work for you because we wanted to work for you. And we'll figure out a way to help you out the best way possible, having the same problem.
Any questions?
I feel like when they, when they, uh, when information comes in, we'll, we'll know.
Yeah.
We'll plan for the interim.
I mean, we lose all our, our means for communications if we have to make those last minute.
Yeah.
Game will be Davis Field or
Can I, um, before we hop onto the next thing, can I get a motion to excuse Stephanie and Michael? I forgot that.
I moved to excuse board members Smith and Smith. Like Smith and Smith.
Mr. Smith, but not Smith ever.
I'll second that.
There's an emotion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Did you like that?
I did like that. That was very good.
Thank you.
Well, Ron, thanks for having me.
Okay, I did see my unlucky portal system.
Hey, thank you for letting me talk one. Just some, I didn't know, we mentioned this before. The, uh, home teams keep their concessions. So whatever group that they have rotated in their bowl. Because a lot of them don't have like one person controls concession. They rotate through groups and different sports and activities. So they keep that. So we go to Monty, some Monty group will be adding concessions.
Oh, I see.
Uh, real quick, speaking of concessions. As soon as you know whether or not there will be home games on Davis Field. Will you let Christie know immediately? Because egg boosters?
Yeah.
The plan right now is there is no plan for concessions. And if they've got to throw something together at the last minute. It's gonna be.
Issues, let's blink, so.
Well, we'll keep that tied in. I mean, we are doing routine updates on this.
Okay.
It's, um, it, it's, it's by the day.
Perfect.
I mean, we, like I said, what we realized today is through the engineering process is if you kept it as a comprehensive project, but there's no way, I don't think there's a way it can be done this fall. So it's like, we didn't make it to projects or.
But one of them, Tyler, Emily, one of them, let them know so they can let their egg boosters know.
Ready for the admin retreat recap?
Mm-hmm.
We had our admin retreat last week. Mark led our work on our executive functioning work, kind of aligned with the reading that we had for, if you put forward and the admin read it. I worked on a lot of the self ID last June, retrained all of our administrators in teacher evaluation process. Make sure that we're set to be in classrooms. And then what we did is we spent two days building, going through the teacher evaluation system. Going through the skills, executive functioning skills could come along from our students. So a lot of our reading was about how in a school system, we want teenagers to act like adults, yet we still treat them like children, like fifteen year olds have, you know, who asked to go to the toilet. They go to work and then their first boss shows up and they go, excuse me boss, and I go, it's bathroom. And, and are we really doing what we need to do to be building successful adults? And does our system look like a, a mechanism on which successful adults look? So our administrative team went through the reading, went through this process on what is a successful adult? What does classroom environment that builds a successful adult look like? And then they were tasked with, now you need to go teach skills, show what a classroom that is reinforcing those skills look like. All of our administrators had to build a lesson that even though you're teaching an English lesson or a weightlifting lesson, what is a lesson that gives agency to the students in the classroom to go like, I can show I learned. I don't need to sit in a lecture. I can go over there and show you. I know exactly what you need to know. Also Ron did a great lesson. Ron taught a lesson on, uh, weightlifting actually. So, um, Ron taught everybody how to do squats and then related it to how, when we say Ron about squats, that squatting and planking, is it planking?
For, uh, seniors, seniors, which I'm entering into. Is the most important thing they could do. It's like fundamental thing.
But it can't just be a lecture and why. So Ron had to build a lesson that released everybody to go show set goals, show improvement. Build all of those kind of executive functioning skills you want to see from your adults. Like can I set a goal? Can I improve myself? Can I make things better? That's a good lesson on Thursday with the administrative team had to teach. To show that when they go into the classroom, that we have a very clear vision on what we want to see in the classroom. That we can actually do meet the expectation that we're hoping to see from our teachers. I feel like it was successful. Mark, you want to add?
Very good reflection, a lot of reflection on what certain things look like in classrooms today.
So, and then the administrative team had the ability to ask as many questions about what their thought process was going into their lesson. I like that. This was really, uh, vulnerable being asked about my ability to teach. We're like, yeah, but your job is to go sit down and have this conversation with every teacher in the district. So we can't be this, you know, have this expectation with each other. How are you gonna do it in the classroom? And as we demand this really high quality of learning environment in the classroom. So I think there was a lot of vulnerability making for administrators. On your degree, it was kind of those questions and everything. It's like, man, everything I thought about being a teacher is like on display. But I do think we had great lessons, great reflection on what we want to see from our teachers.
I know that it's vulnerable, but I, I feel like such growth comes out of that vulnerability, those struggles, so.
Ron, you taught, yeah, I, I kind of felt pretty exposed, right? Like you gotta show all of these administrators how you would teach weightlifting.
Yeah, I think that real eye up when you think of the base, what he said about when you observe a class, evaluate a teacher. I don't care what you know. I care what about those, with those kids.
Mm-hmm.
That was definitely out.
It's like, yeah, our classrooms need to not be the teachers showing everything they know. Our classrooms need to be an environment that enable our students to show everything they have. And we don't, in a day, we don't. You, the old environment is people watch and observe a teacher. They lecture, you take notes on how great that lecture was. And then the day you walk out, that couldn't, you know, you have no idea what any of those students know from that lecture. And that's really not our priority. Mark, anything else?
That's good stuff.
So I feel like our administrators are feeling excited about getting in classrooms.
The content is great. The message is good.
I have board retreats. We can do that topic.
I, I'm a stinky liar. I'll have to apologize now. I said I wasn't coming to the board retreat because I thought it was during my work hours. I will be there.
I will be there.
I will be there. I, I thought it was during my work. I was like, I can't, I'm, my schedule's too booked to go.
I have one. I have one clarification. It's the agenda item number two. I have thirty minutes etched out. But we've talked about that every single board meeting, which is the rule of school board and governance, kind of policy governance. My question was is, would you like to have more time going through the data? Because we have draft data as we build a new data report on how we're doing in meeting our benchmarks. And would you like to stretch the third topic and shorten, if not eliminate, the second topic because we've talked about it every four.
Okay, yes, I would. I personally would like to have at least some of that time allocated to not topic number three. If we don't know a role as a board for governance, then we're doing something wrong at this point. Um.
Oh, and I think that this was actually class that was offered at Boston.
Right.
Part of our other training that we had.
Right.
And this is what Herringham did.
Absolutely.
Every time we're together, we have discussed this topic.
Yes.
So I love to dominate because every time we've been together, we've discussed this topic. But I wanted, because I feel that I needed to give you the opportunity to pull it. Um would you like to? And we can stretch out that topic too. We have a group coming in uh at uh seven. As panelists to start talking about different areas in which we can have students engaged. So I would like to really have that time logged off at seven.
Yeah.
Ron has been leading that group. Well, I should have Tasha could be joining that group. Um but she's going to be talking about our web crew, our link crew, and then also she's going to be talking about, we're building a. We're working on readdressing our student board reps. So we're going to talk about how we're building a student superintendent advisory council. Through the superintendent advisory council, we'd like to recruit our board. So we've actually had our first Thursday of the month etched out where we're meeting an advisory council of all the students. So then that way, as a group, they're getting the handle on it. And as some local students really emerge, pulling them into our board meetings.
Oh, it's a fabulous plan. I like it.
So that's, so she'll talk about how we're addressing those, some of those bigger issues that we've been trying to tackle. So um on how we really want to be, I mean, the rule of education is to set students up for a successful future life, but students should be able to advocate what that's successful or what.
Mm hmm.
Like, what do you want to do? What do you want to do? And are we providing the essential skills?
Mm hmm.
Um so Connor McNeil, incredible hire, just out there, he wants to talk about ways which he's been working with his that he feels that he can get more kids engaged. Uh Crystal Stanley, um she's going to come talk about unified. We actually have the data. Our largest population of students not engaged in any activities is our special needs population. I mean, we actually, it is probably the most, we have sixty five percent of Elma students, high school students are engaged in some level of activity. But that number is flipped. It's thirty five percent of students with special needs engaged in an activity. So Crystal is going to talk about ways in which we could put that. That is probably the biggest gap of our student activity engagement. Jeff is going to talk about um our wrestling program has grown. Exponentially. So we asked Jeff to come in and talk about how this program has grown, the place we've done to have this program grow and how. Kind of like what you're doing to get more kids engaged. It's a steady process and how we can support that. So but we just feel that. Um. The district this year, so this is some of the conversations we've had. We feel that um done a lot of work on the mastery of learning and the academic and the critical competence readiness and doing social credit. That we do like to propose to you. I mean, obviously, as the board, you said it's the whole, so it really helps support a conversation on what we can do to help our students feel like they are peoples. And all of our students are part of it. We talk a lot about only harassment, your students not being very nice. Um. Biggest issue we really find with our students is lack of empathy. Um and the best way to build empathy is to be on a team of each other and to work towards a common goal. So really set that as a problem. Then I think I have some proposed ideas. If there's anything we can try to eliminate or take off, we can modify. I'm proposing a four thousand's policy review. Posing a four thousand's policy review because that's all of our facilities work, which might seem like it has nothing to do with our student engagement. But it actually does because if we want our high school students engaged through our own programs, our elementary program students are engaged through our partnership with Elma Clary Soccer. Basketball room. And it's how they can access our fields that help grow those programs. So I feel that the four thousand's policies, which is all the policies regarding our facilities, would be the most representative on still maintaining that overall focus to keep the students engaged in the district. I have a focus on every, um focus on inclusion. Implementation on our new instructional materials led by Mr. Keating. Uh focusing on high quality and instruction in the classroom, which is the focus of our administrative team. And then looking at that executive functioning, are we building successful adults? So kind of changing our strategic plan from social emotional learning to those executive functioning skills, which is inclusive of how are we building successful adults? How would we make our students feel helpful, feel like their education is set? If there's something else you'd like that we can. Obviously, we can modify tomorrow, but this is kind of the first one.
Yeah, I like it. I like thinking the change for item number two. We can eliminate that and stretch the time. I sort of agree with that.
Right. And then we have lots of stuff. I have a draft of our updated data report. It's not in publishing format, but. So we can look at how our students are doing.
Great.
Right.
Thank you.
For the one retreat topic.
Do we have any public comment? No, thank you. Okay, new business. We have the approval of the volleyball booster fundraiser. Oh.
I don't have any confidence.
I want to grow your sister.
I think that there's the same as last year.
Your chance. Okay. Any questions, Ryan?
No.
I'll move for the approval of volleyball booster fundraisers.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made in second bid. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thank you for being here. Uh Alma football booster fundraisers.
I just, I see Mitch is here. I just have one question, Mitch, on the gold cards. You have a start date of eight twenty seven and an end date of eight twenty nine. You're only going to stop.
For two days?
Two days.
It should be the twenty first. Our first day of practice, the twenty first to the twenty ninth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you're only selling for two days, but I want to know where to get one. I'm so.
Somebody better come knocking on my door.
There should be, it it might even start, I mean, some parents might have the free approval or the free uh forum online going around. Pre-sale, so you can build and get them down if you wanted to.
So is it fair to say that? After approval tonight through the twenty ninth?
Yes.
Candace, Ron, how are we doing? I knew that was hanging out there last week on giving COI for a facility.
Davin's. That was actually.
Do you know of a support system for when our?
Time.
Okay.
Oh.
Because I think that would just be the other big point.
What are you?
I just went and said non-divisionary that we have insurance for the field, so. Yeah.
I mean, there's all that.
So doesn't happen at dates on it.
It does. Mitch, my bad. I'm I'm looking at the wrong line. That your dates are for the food, uh the youth football camp.
No. Okay.
See right here. I just.
You just have August to November for.
Oh, yeah, so August to November.
Yeah, because we do sell them in our booth or.
Oh, whatever you have left over. Okay, so scratch that.
Got it. Never mind.
You can correct a spelling that was we her games are, depending on we her. That's okay.
I.
That's not, that's not a spelling. That's a type bear.
I like I said, we her.
I like to make motion for the approval of the Elma football fundraiser fundraisers.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of Alma and Satsev School District twenty four twenty five agreement, Ms. Arnold.
This is our good service agreement to the Elma Hills Forest Science School District and to every year agreement.
I'll move for the approval of the Alma and Satsev School District twenty twenty four twenty five agreement.
I'll second that.
An emotion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of authorization for account management and payroll changes.
Um this is a a resolution we gave to the Bay to remove Jenny House and add Jenny Jen. Same house. To the account, they won't do it without board approval and resolution.
I'll move for the approval of authorization for account management payroll changes.
I'll second that.
An emotion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution two dash two four two five retired teachers as substitutes.
From every year resolution that allows us to use rights for retired teachers as substitutes.
I'll move for the approval of resolution two dash two four two five retired teachers as substitutes.
I'll second that.
There's an emotion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution three dash two four two five authorization for petty cash and interest accounts.
Another every year resolution which allows me to disperse money for pay accounts at each of the schools there listed. And for me to have a specialty revolving and a travel account.
I'll move for the approval of resolution three dash two four two five authorization for petty cash and interest accounts.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh approval of resolution four dash two four two five district investment.
This is a every year resolution to allow me to do this, Mia or Chris to do district investments.
I'll move for the approval of resolution four dash two four two five district investments.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution five dash two four two five surplus for our CEO grant purposes.
Uh this is a recommendation from our legal counsel as we've analyzed that our CEO grants one point two million dollar grant to retrofit the back of the transportation facility into a large soccer park.
I'll move for the approval of resolution five dash two four two five surplus for our CEO grant purposes.
I'll second that.
And a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh approval of policy forty two sixty use of facilities.
Uh this is just an update was of policies. And removal, removal of part of the mostly use. And we are working on a new P schedule that Mr. Nestman will see and since it's a procedure, it just goes to.
Okay.
I want it updated for the new year.
I'll move for the approval of policy four two six zero use of facilities first reading.
Second that.
It's been a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and approval of policy fifty four oh six leave sharing.
This is an update was of policy.
Bouncing around with. Uh I move for the approval of policy fifty four oh six leave sharing first readings.
I'll second that.
And a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion approval to adopt policy sixty five thirty insurance.
This is a new policy for us and it is required through our workers. LNI is requiring them to have a new school district that goes through the ESP workers com program to be earned.
I'll move for the approval to adopt policy six five three zero insurance first reading.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion approval of policy sixty seven hundred nutrition.
Um this policy is being split into three policies. Which will be the next three. So they've taken the one and they split it out into nutrition is one policy. Health and fitness is a policy, or health is a policy and physical fitness is a policy.
But currently it was under all one.
One policy and they're splitting it out into three.
I'll move for the approval of policy sixty seven hundred nutrition first reading.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion approval to adopt policy sixty seven oh one recess and physical activity first reading.
Started to split out. I'll move for the approval to adopt policy sixty seven oh one recess and physical activity first reading.
I'll second that.
And a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Uh discussion to and approval to adopt policy sixty seven oh two wellness first reading.
I move for the approval to adopt policy sixty seven oh two wellness first reading.
I'll second that.
Been a motion made in seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Superintendent report.
Um well, we're off to a great start of the school year. And Mr. Keating has a great summer institute plan ready for our staff. Tuesday is going to be focused on um all of our new instructional materials. And we're also working on passion project based classes for an intervention. We find it is uh for our teachers with hidden talents. It could be cooking. It could be games, it could be anything. And what we want to do is we want to find those hidden talents to find ways that we can pull out English and math skills as a way to get our students, the most in need students excited about learning. And then, so that'll be Tuesday. Wednesday, Wednesday, we'll be focused on getting all staff to have two weeks built out within our new learning management system. They're either going to be taking in their new instructional materials that we just adopted and building out uh lessons. So their first two weeks will be done for them and they have a whole day to do that. Or they'll be taking those passion project courses. And then on the uh Thursday, Eric has been working on making sure that we have our AI built out as our staff. Like on the back of the back, I'm sorry, Wednesday's AI, Wednesday's AI, Thursday is our, so then that way our staff are taking our tools and. Uh learning how to use technology and build out instructional classes. So we're pretty excited about our plan to bring our staff in. Have them kind of ready for using our professional development time to give them the tools to be successful, all these new materials and technological tools that they'll be using in classrooms.
I love the secret hidden talent. I'm curious. She lives with hidden talent.
We are on a way. The goal is, I want to be like, our goals are very clear. We want our students. Excited and feeling like they're Elma Eagles and knowing that there is something to learn, but we don't want. The academic rigor to be taken away.
Right.
So if somebody has a incredible skill in baking, students can now do the technical reading of baking. Really build up that technical skill, or it could be the measurements and they can get math skill. Whatever it is that our teachers feel like, you know what, I get excited about this hobby and I'm going to help you get excited about this hobby. That's what we want to start seeing as a way to. But we don't want to shout those academic skills, really bring those academic skills forward by relation.
I like the flexibility and the creativity of it.
Um I move that we adjourn the meeting.
My second thoughts.
An emotion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Cheers.